Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel to gavel coverage of town and school board meetings to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett, I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack National Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected, follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.
Alright, thank you. Good evening ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the December 30th of 2020 zoning board of adjustment meeting. Our next meeting will be on January 27th, 2021 at 7:00 PM, which will be virtually via Zoom as we are tonight. Before we get started, I do have a script that I need to read in. And this is the Town of Merrimack Zoning Board of Adjustment Remote Meeting Right to No Law. So, as Chair of the Merrimack Zoning Board of Adjustment, due to the COVID-19 crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to the Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, this is to confirm that we are: A) Providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing either of the following phone numbers, which are 1312-626-6799, or 1929-205-6099. Our meeting ID is 921-6681-0590. The meeting may also be viewed on Merrimack TV Channel 20 on Comcast, or the Merrimack TV webpage, which is merrimacktv.com. B) Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom. Instructions are provided in the meeting agenda posted on the Town of Merrimack's website at www.merrimacknh.gov/zoningdashboard. C) Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please email rprice@merrimacknh.gov. And D) Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. So what we're going to do is a roll call attendance. So each member that is present will state their name, and if there is anyone in the room with them, which is required under the Right to No Law. So, I, uh, I'm Rich Conescue. There is nobody in the room with me. Ben?
Ben Niles, nobody in your room with me.
Rod Buckley, nobody in the room with me.
And Drew?
Drew Duffy, and there's nobody in the room with me.
Alright. So for the next piece, Ben, I'm going to ask that you sit in for Kathy Stroud. And Drew, I'm going to ask that you sit in for Lynn. And just so that everyone is aware, we now have four members of the Board. We prefer to have five members of the Board, because in the event that we vote on a petition, and two are in favor of the petition and two are against the petition, the petition will automatically fail. So in order for a petition to pass, a minimum of three of the four members have to vote in favor for it. We are hoping that Patrick will still be here tonight. So if he, uh, if he joins us, he will be the fifth member. Otherwise, we do give the option for any of the petitioners when it's, when we get around to your petition, to choose to continue your petition until we have a full Board. It's, it's up to you if you want to take that avenue. The only thing that we got to make sure that we're addressing ahead of time is that, again, in order for an item to pass, it requires a minimum of three votes in favor. So, again, with four people, three of us have to be in favor for something to pass. So, moving right along, Rodney, can you please read in the preamble?
Sure. Good evening to those in attendance and watching at home. For the benefit of those who have not previously attended a zoning board hearing, the procedure is as follows. The petitions will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. However, the Chair may change the order at their discretion. The Board will treat all petitioners, their representatives, abutters, and other interested parties fairly and with respect. The petitioner will be asked to give an overview of their petition and read through their responses to the criteria applicable to their case, allowing for the Board to ask questions after each item. State law and local ordinances establish the criteria that must be met in order for the Board to grant approval to a petition. And it is the petitioner's responsibility to demonstrate that they have met each criterion. Following the presentation, the Chair will open the floor for public comment, either in favor or opposed to the request. If necessary, an opportunity for rebuttal will be offered to the petitioner and the public. However, discussion will not be allowed to devolve into back and forth arguments. All comments made shall be directed towards the Chair. Should a question be asked, the Chair will pose the question to the petitioner. Afterward, the Chair will close the public hearing and the Board will deliberate and vote on the petition. At this time, please silence all your mobile devices.
Okay. So the first petitioner is Craig Bellhumor, petitioner owner, variance under Section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a detached garage with a setback of 8.5 feet whereas 15 feet is required. The parcel is located at 12 Bradford Drive in the R1 Residential by Soils and Aquifer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, tax map 6D Lot 309, Case ZBA 2020-39. And this was an item that was continued from the November 18th zoning board meeting. And again, Mr. Bellhumor, we do give you the option to request that we continue this if you like, in the event that you would like to wait for a full Board, or we can continue tonight with your, or we can hear your petition tonight, it's up to you.
I'd like to continue tonight.
Alright. So in that case, please, if you could, just tell us a little bit about what you're looking to do and we'll go through the five criteria.
As you said, I'm just looking to build a detached garage in my essentially backyard. I got a small yard, there's a swimming pool in the backyard, it kind of limits what I can do as well as my septic system. If I were to build it on the side of my house where my driveway is, I'd be looking at like, five feet off the property line and I feel a big eyesore to my neighbor, and I don't want to do that to him. And I don't want to push the envelope for even more leeway with the town. And where I am in the backyard, it's kind of to the neighbor's side of the house, so it doesn't really affect him much. And there's already a white vinyl fence there, so it's not going to be much of a bother in his way. And it's kind of the easiest access point I have. I kind of have, not a driveway, but kind of like a parking area where I park my camper and my boat back there now. So it's kind of almost set up perfectly as it is. But I just, between myself, my three kids, and, you know, a small split house, we just don't have the storage. And I like where I live, I like the town, and we don't want to move. We've been here 10 years, so I'm just hoping I can stay where I am and grow with it.
And before we get too far, I apologize. I should have sworn you in at the beginning. So, with these Zoom meetings, we will be swearing each petitioner in at the beginning of their petition. So, although I can't see you, if you could raise your right hand, and you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you so much. And please continue to the, uh, to the five points. Also, we will, uh, if we could pause after each, each point in case the Board has any questions.
Yep, what was the, is there a list of the five points?
Uh, yes, the sheet that you filled out for the Community Development Office, though. When, so the first point is the variance criteria is granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because...
I got you, I apologize.
No worries.
Yeah, it's, like you said, you know, it's, it's in the back, it's out of, kind of out of sight, out of mind. It's better than the neighbors'. Um, contrary to the public, if anything, it's kind of cleaning up the kids' toys and stuff out of my yard, making stuff look better. Uh, if anything, increase the property values of my house and my neighbor's houses around me. Um, as I said, between the pool and the neighbor's house, I don't have any other options. The septic is on one side of my house where I have more land, so I can't go out that way. The driveway is closer to the property line where it would be unfitting to go to the neighbor's yard and I would need a variance there, which would be even smaller and, you know, it wouldn't look good for my neighbor, so it doesn't work there. Um, so the only spot I have is kind of where I'm asking to put it. That's pretty much what I got.
Okay. Mr. Chair, do you want me to read the responses from the application in case he doesn't happen to have a copy of it with him? Um...
We have it if you want. Work.
Yeah, so, uh, if you could, so I, I understand that was all for the, the first point. We do need to step through each criteria. I would first ask if the Board has any questions, though, to what Mr. Bellhumor's presented. Ben, any questions? Rodney?
Not yet.
Drew, any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Alright, in that case, um, let's continue on to the second one, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because...
Uh, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because it'll still be within the 30 feet setback off the side street boundary. That was the answer I had for that one. The third one's granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because it is a loss for us not to have the garage because we need the extra space. However, necessarily a gain to the public. It's not built... We are only a few feet short of meeting the, the legal setback requirements and it might not be noticed just by looking at it. Number four, granting the variance would do substantial justice because it would allow me to store and organize more family items inside the garage and not spread around the yard. Would allow us to have the storage we need for our family and not have to move to a new location with more storage. And then there's, yep.
Yep, and then so the, I, I don't have any questions, does anyone on the Board have any questions?
No.
I have one question. Has there been any response from any of the abutters?
Uh, so I have a couple of points. No, there's not been any response from any abutters on this one. What I will point out is that the applicant got a, uh, an old copy of this application where we had some issues with the, there's a, there's a repeat question by accident. So in your packet, you have, and I doubt he's got this in front of him, so I'll, I'll read it to help him out. There was, we tried to get that corrected a month and a half ago. So he emailed in a response to the surrounding, not diminish surrounding property values criterion, because that was missing from the original response. So his answer for that was granting the variance would not diminish the values of surrounding properties because adding a garage to my property would increase property values, which increases neighborhood values. It would still blend in the neighborhood as many homes of, has, excuse me, as many homes have garages around us. It would provide more privacy to my neighbor that directly abuts my backyard where the garage would be built if the variance is approved. So with that, outside of the hardship questions, you now have all of the answers to date. So he can respond to the hardship criterion now. Okay, thank you. And Mr. Bellhumor, if you could just read through your hardship criteria for us?
Okay, so for the hardship ones, it's owing to the following special conditions of the property that: distinguish it from other properties in the area, explain how the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of the property. I have, there is no space a garage can be built without a variance on the property. We are a growing family that loves our home and neighborhood, but require more space for storage. We like to build a garage in the rear, to be away from the neighbors, and enleast, the enleast intrusive location to our yard and our neighbor's views. Many homes in our neighborhood have garages, so it is not uncommon, and several are close to property lines.
And I think, I think that's very fair and this is very cut and dry. Certainly people come before the Board often with intents to construct a garage with a non-conforming lot. So I, I certainly don't think there's anything wrong with this and I've, I've seen the location, I think it's a, it's a great idea. Is there anything else you'd like to add before I open this up to the public?
Um, no, I think I've pretty much spoken my piece and I can just hope for the best at this point.
Alright. Well, thank you so much. We already have one caller who has raised their hand. So if the caller with the last three digits of the phone number 085, please press star six to unmute yourself. And are you looking to speak on this particular petition?
Actually, Rich, this is Patrick Dwyer, this is the only way I could get through. I didn't get a link to the meeting, so I actually emailed you.
Ooh, okay. Would you like me to forward? I'll, I'll see if I can guess Patrick something. Okay.
Alright, that'd be great, thanks guys.
Okay, so, uh, I guess before you mute yourself back, Patrick, do you, uh, were you, were you able to hear the, the presentation?
I was only here, able to hear the last four. I don't think I'd be in a position to cast the vote, but I would like to be able to get in so I could, uh, uh, hear the, go to, you know, participate in the rest of the meeting.
Okay. So in that, in that case, I will not ask for a vote from you for this. However, what I will ask is, um, if anyone that's looking to speak either in favor or against this petition, to please dial in and press star nine to indicate to the Board that you are looking to speak either in favor or against. We would like to hear from anyone that is looking to comment on this particular petition, so we'll give it about a minute. If anyone is looking to speak in favor or against the construction of the detached garage item that we're looking at, again, please dial in, the number will be at the bottom of the screen, Okay. I don't see anybody has dialed in looking to speak on this petition, so I'll go ahead and close the public portion. Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve Craig Bellhumor, petitioner owner, variance under Section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a detached garage with a side setback of 8.5 feet whereas 15 feet is required. The parcel is located at 12 Bradford Drive in the R1 Residential by Soils and Aquifer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, tax map 6D Lot 309, Case Number ZBA 2020-39. And this item was continued from the November 18th, 2020 zoning board meeting.
And is that going to be subject to the conditions recommended by staff?
The petitioner shall obtain a right-of-way permit from the Highway Division of Public Works prior to constructing any second driveway access to the lot.
I second that.
Okay, motion was made by Rodney, uh, seconded by Drew. Rodney, are you in favor?
Yes.
Drew, are you in favor?
Yes.
Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
I as well am in favor. So this variance passes 4-0-0. And Mr. Bellhumor, just so you know, there, you have 30 days for somebody to appeal this, so if you begin work, you do so at your own risk, but otherwise, good luck.
Okay, thank you. Dwight, does that, um, that application for the, the Highway Department go with it?
No, so what, that, that's a separate, I, I, we, we assumed because of the location of the garage that you might be putting a second, a second driveway in. If you ultimately end up doing that, you'd have to go to the Highway Garage on Turkey Hill Road. They have a, what's called a right-of-way permit there that would allow you to put that access in if they approve that.
Okay, but where I'm not putting a full-on driveway, I don't need that just yet?
Correct. If you're not putting any access point there, then there's nothing you need to do at this time.
Alright, thank you guys very much.
Alright, thank you, take care, Mr. Bellhumor. Alright, so for the next agenda item, whereas we have, uh, we do have Patrick here, he will be voting in, so we will have a full Board of Five. So the next item is Christopher McFarland, petitioner owner, variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit the installation of a pool with a rear setback of 8.6 feet whereas 12 feet is required. Parcel is located at 12 Friar Truck, Friar Tuck Court in the R4 Residential Cluster Development and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 6C Lot 593, Case ZBA 2020-40. And who will be speaking for this particular petition?
Uh, that's me, Chris McFarland. I'm just using my wife Becky McFarland's Zoom.
Uh, okay, so will there be anyone else speaking with you tonight?
Uh, no, just me.
Okay. Can you just please raise your right hand? And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth tonight?
I do.
Alright, thank you so much, and if you'd please just walk us through what you're looking to do and we'll go through the criteria and stop if we have any questions.
Okay, um, so I am looking to put an in-ground pool, 18 by 36, in my backyard. And, um, I have a bit of a unique, I, I think it's unique anyways, whereas I'm in a cluster development, so the setbacks as far as structures are concerned are a little different. I already had a 24 by 32 addition approved and my setbacks there are five feet. And I assumed that the pool would be the same, but when I went to apply for the pool, they told me that it's 12. And the, the lots here are pretty small, I have about a quarter of an acre. So when I started drawing up where I could fit a pool this size, I quickly found out that I would need to go for the variance because there's, um, there's no difference. I believe it's 12 feet throughout town for a pool to the water line. And I, and then I found out that I actually have 45 abutters. So, it ended up costing me quite a bit in a butter fees to be able to present here tonight, so I hope it goes in my favor.
Excellent, excellent. Rich, before we proceed, can we confirm, as I know Patrick wanted to connect to video, but he's, looks like he's still muted. I just want to confirm he's actually with us. Okay.
I'm, I'm actually, I'm here on the phone, I, I, but I don't have a link to get on for the video.
I, Patrick, I emailed it to you, I don't know if you got a chance to see it to see if it worked.
Uh, hold on a second. Um, I haven't gotten an email.
Uh, yeah, I don't know. Mine shows as sent at 7:24.
I'm hitting refresh on my account, so I'll, I'll keep an eye out for it. As soon as I can get it, I'll, I'll jump in, otherwise I'll just stay on the phone. I am in the room by myself for, for all of that.
Okay, thank you. Um, so Mr. McFarland, if, if we could just step through the five criteria and just pause at the end of each?
Yep. Okay, uh, so number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because, and I wrote, the pool will be located on my property, therefore there will be no harm to the public's interest.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Alright, continue.
Uh, number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because there is an open space buffer between Little John Court and Friar Tuck Court. Due to the open space between the streets, I feel I am not overcrowding the neighbors. And I didn't write this, but I'm fairly confident that it's 30 feet between where my property line ends and the Little John property ends. I think it's 30 feet.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Alright, on to three.
Uh, number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because it is a regu, ah, it is a residential area and it is consistent within the area's present use.
Alright, any questions from the Board? Alright, we'll continue on to four.
Number four, granting the variance would not diminish the values of surrounding properties because the pool increased the value of my property and in turn increased the value of my neighbor's properties.
Alright, any questions for that? Alright, if you want to just move on to unnecessary hardship?
Yep, uh, so I chose number 5A. Do you want me to read that?
Uh, please, just, yeah.
Yep, okay. Uh, owing to the following special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, explain how the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of the property because the existing house slash addition to the house are already in place. Placing a pool within the 12-foot setback would put the water line too close to the buildings. By moving the pool into the 12-foot setback area, the desired pool size can be safely used. Um, so, I didn't write it right there, but if, if I was to put the 18 by 36 pool within the 12-foot setback, it would put me, um, 4.6 feet off the back of the addition that I've put in. So, it would be very close to the back door that, um, comes out of the back of that garage. And that's it.
Absolutely. And I think that makes, that makes perfect sense. I mean, unless you're looking to use like a window on the backside of your house as a, as a jumping board or something.
I'm not, I hope my, my, I have a three-year-old son, but I, I'm sure the thought will cross his mind as he gets older, but hopefully by putting it further away, he won't think about it.
Yeah, and it does, it makes total sense because you do have that, that kind of buffer between the streets to, you know, to, to want to do it this way. So, I, I totally understand what you're, what you're looking to do. Are there any questions from anyone on the Board regarding this petition?
No, it makes sense to me.
Um, all right, so, uh, with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and open the the public portion of the, uh, presentation. So if there's anyone that's looking to speak either in favor or against, uh, the pool, uh, petition on Friar Tuck. Uh, please dial the number at the bottom of the screen and hit star nine, uh, to indicate to us that you're looking to speak. And we'll pause for for a minute or two. Um. See if anyone calls in. I don't see anybody, uh, new calling in. Um, so, um, I'll go ahead and close the public portion, um, and entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we grant the variance under section three oh two of the zoning ordinance to permit the to permit the installation of a pool with a rear setback of eight point six feet, whereas twelve feet is required. The parcel is located at twelve Friar Tuck Court in the R four residential cluster development and aquifer conservation districts. Tax map six C lot five nine three. Case number Z B A two oh two oh dash four oh.
I second it.
All right, motion made by Ben, seconded by Rodney. Uh, Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
Rodney, are you in favor?
Yes.
Patrick, are you in favor?
Yes.
Drew, are you in favor?
Yes.
And I as well am in favor, so this passes five zero zero. Um, but as I said on the last petition, just so you know, there is a thirty-day window where someone could appeal it, just in case.
Well, I won't start. I won't start digging it now. It's frozen.
I mean, fair, yeah. But, um, otherwise, uh, congratulations and good luck.
Okay, um, so. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, have a good one. Thanks again.
You too. Take care.
You too.
All right, uh, so the next petition we have is for Kodiak Veterinary Hospital LLC petitioner and Karen Roy owner. Uh, variance under section three point oh two note six of the zoning ordinance to allow the construction of a building addition. Nineteen feet from the Daniel Webster Highway right of way, whereas fifty feet is required. Parcel is located at two fifty-five Daniel Webster Highway in the I one industrial and aquifer conservation districts. Tax map three dash two lot zero three nine case Z B A twenty twenty dash forty-one. Um, and I it it I believe we have a few people looking to speak on this. So, uh, Mr. Pearlman, I think you said you were one of the people looking to speak on this?
Yes, please. Um, Mr. Chairman, members, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman. I'm an attorney with Prunier and Pearlman of Nashua, representing Kodiak Veterinary Hospital. Um, also it goes by Kodiak Vet Center. Um, with me tonight are the owners of the Kodiak Vet Center, Dr. Masuma Barrett and Dennis Barrett. Um, they currently, um, run their, uh, vet center out of a, um, facility in Hudson, and they're looking to move, um, to Merrimack. They, um, have an agreement with Karen Roy to buy, um, two fifty-five Daniel Webster Highway. Um, but to make their, uh, business a success in Merrimack, they are looking to expand the front portion of the building. Um, and Robert, if I could please have the, uh, K and A plan brought up?
And, um, will will, uh, the the owners be speaking tonight?
Uh, Den- Dennis will be.
Okay, uh, so for anyone who's looking to speak tonight, if you could just please, uh, raise your right hand. Um, and you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Do. I do.
Okay, all right, uh, in that case, um, uh, please continue. And if you could just pause it at each bullet in the, uh, variance criteria in case we have questions.
Of course, um, you see the, um, lot, uh, we had Keach Nordstrom prepare, um, some plans for the board tonight. Um, and we have an existing building that has a financial service office, um, and Karen Roy is looking to sell and downsize her business. Um, and the Barretts are looking to move in and expand this building, um, by having the two, uh, wings of the building squared up. Um, you can see the existing building, um, it's has three components. There's the main center of the building that has two wings. Um, going toward the parking lot to the south and up to Star Drive to the north. Um, and what we're looking to do is expand those wings to really square up the building, as we call it. Um, in doing that, um, the, uh, closest portion of the squaring up the building will be nineteen feet from the Daniel Webster, uh, right of way, and we have a fifty-foot setback. Uh, so that's the that's the relief we're requesting, um, with the board tonight. Excuse me, and and before I start, I would point out, um, to everyone, if you if you see the plan that's before you where our front property line, um, runs parallel to the Daniel Webster Highway, um, uh, roadway. Um, there is, um, an an eighteen-foot strip of grass in between our property line and the Daniel Webster Highway asphalt. Um, now that's not our property. I can't count that in our in our discussion. Um, but it does add to the width and 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 depth, um, to the, uh, to the, just the look and feel to the to the area. We, um, we provided an architectural, um, plan that shows the interior layout. I'm not sure we necessarily need to get into that, but if any board members have questions, we have that ready, uh, and available. Um, so before I begin with the five points, Mr. Chairman, I would pause for any questions of the board.
All right, thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions? All right, please continue.
Thank you. We believe, um, that we would not be contrary to the public interest in the granting of this variance by the squaring up the of this building. Um, I've I was there today. I've I've been there a couple of times now. Um, we, um, won't be affecting, um, the character of the neighborhood. We won't be affecting any site distance. You can see as far as you can see, um, this is a straight shot along Daniel Webster Highway, so we don't have any, um, impact to, uh, site this site distances, especially, uh, the left turn movements in and out of the driveway and coming out of Star Drive. Um, we don't see that we're adversely affecting the public health or safety or welfare concerns to the town. Mr. Chairman, unless unless someone jumps in, I'm probably just gonna run through.
Yeah, actually, um, I think in this particular case, uh, you can you please, please feel free to run through it.
Okay, thank you. Um, we believe the spirit of the ordinance, um, is maintained with this application. Um, we have two ordinances at play. The industrial, um, the I one district, you know, is is designed for our commercial businesses. And we we meet, um, the industrial, um, one district. With respect to the setback, we have setback variance, excuse me, we have setback ordinances to prevent encroaching and overcrowding our neighbors or overcrowding the streets. Um, and with this, uh, proposed expansion, we're not going to be overcrowding onto the street. We won't be, um, encroaching to adversely affect, um, any impact upon Daniel Webster Highway or to the town. Um, again, we don't see that we're going to be out of character of the neighborhood. Um, we are just will be another commercial use in a in a commercial district. We believe that we, uh, are presenting substantial justice to both, um, the owner, who as I understand has been trying to sell this property for some time. Um, and to the Barretts in Kodiak Vet Center, because they have been looking for, I think they told me like seven years now to relocate. Um, and this is an ideal spot, um, with the additional space, they'll be able to service their, uh, clients, uh, and the pets, um, and all that they need to do, um, at the site. At the same, so there's great benefit to the owner, great benefit to the applicant. At the same time, this, we don't see any impact to the town. So weighing those factors, we see the substantial justice, um, in favor of this applicant. Likewise, um, being a commercial, um, area, we don't see that there's any impact on neighboring property values. We, um, uh, are are purchasing the property. There'll be improvements, uh, to the tune of about three hundred thousand dollars. Um, at, you know, at ballpark number. Um, our neighbors are commercial, um, industrial. We have an abandoned gas station across the street, uh, raisin and landscaping. Dorian Why Not is, um, across Star Drive from us, and and she has submitted, um, a letter of support or an email of support, rather, um, to the board. She runs the animal care, um, the boarding facility, um, right next door. Uh, so we don't see that we're adversely affecting any surrounding property values, um, with our application. You know, immediately south of us is a small is a small apartment building. We don't, you know, we're we're maintaining the buffer of that parking lot as it is today. So we don't see any impact, um, to our, uh, little apartment building right next door. And finally, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna take a sip of water. Robert, if I could please have the, um, uh, the two fifty-five D W H PDF that I provided, it was from the town's, um, G I S.
Can I pull up our actual G I S? Because when I pulled that up, it kind of blurred.
Uh, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yep. Let's see. Everybody's.
Okay, great. Can we can we expand? Can we go, um,
Get right back?
No, you don't go the other way. Um, yep, there we go.
Yep.
Um, with respect to the hardship, Mr. Chairman and members, uh, we believe we have a good case. Because other than the lot immediately south of us, the small apartment building, if you look at all the other lots in our neighborhood, all the other lots along the stretch of Daniel have highway are much are much deeper and larger. And particularly the much deeper, um, such that if we were to be proposing some, um, uh, new building or additions, uh, to any of these other lots, you know, we wouldn't necessarily have, um, a setback issue because a lot although all our neighboring lots are much bigger. Our lot, however, is is very thin, uh, not deep at all. Um, and if we actually apply all the setbacks, the front and the rear, um, setbacks, uh, we have a very, uh, unusual buildable area that's ten feet deep and a hundred and eighty-seven feet long. Um, so that would be a that would be a challenge to, uh, build build anything that would comply with that setback. Uh, we're going to the front of the building because it's the most logical place to square up the building. We can't go to the rear, um, because the fire department would yell at us because we wouldn't have, um, the full, um, access around the building and maintain the parking that we need. Um, the property drops off steeply just behind, uh, the existing, uh, parking to the rear. So we have an unusual lot, um, that we respectfully suggest that the front buildout, the front squaring up of the building, um, makes the most sense. And the ordinance, um, as applied, um, to this site, um, is not, um, reasonably related to the purposes of the the underlying purposes of the Merrimack zoning ordinance. Um, and further, given our use, uh, we have a reasonable use of the property as it's allowed in the zone, being a veterinary, um, hospital. And that's all I had, uh, for my presentation. Um, perhaps Dennis wants to, um, if the board be willing to explain just a minute or two about exactly what, um, Kodiak Vet Center does differently than other veterinary hospitals.
So, um, we've been in Hudson for going on eight years now. Uh, we're different than your average veterinary hospital in the sense that we're an integrative practice. Most of the vet hospitals out there are Western practices, practicing Western medicine. We also have holistic veterinary hospitals. We are integrative, meaning we actually blend both. There's not that many of those. Um, and as a result, it we draw from a very wide area of clients. For eight years, but currently, uh, only thirty-five percent of our clients come from within Hudson. So we do draw from a very wide area. We have people from as far as New York, Rhode Island, Maine come to see us. Um, we're very much looking forward to becoming partners with you and neighbors with you in Merrimack. And if you have any more specific questions, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, other than that, Mr. Chairman, that that's our that's our presentation.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Um, does anyone on the board have any questions regarding, um, this petition?
No. So.
Okay, I actually see that Patrick is now on video. Excellent. All right, um, in that case, uh, what I'll go ahead and do is open up the public portion. So if there's anyone looking to speak in favor or against this petition, uh, please dial the number at the bottom of the screen and hit star nine to indicate to us that you're looking to speak regarding this petition. And while I'm waiting for, uh, callers to call in, I'll go ahead and pull up the email, uh, to read that into, uh, to read that in. So we did get the, uh, the, uh, email from, uh, Dorian Why Not, um, Animal Care Center of N H L C and and, uh, looks like, uh, she said, Dear Merrimack Zoning Board Members, I own and operate the Animal Care Center of New Hampshire at two fifty-seven Daniel Webster Highway. My business is directly across from Star Drive from the proposed Kodiak Vet Center. I fully support Kodiak becoming my neighbor. I spoke with Dr. Masuma Barrett about two months ago. Uh, we both believe our respective businesses will complement each other. I have no concerns with the variance request. I ask the board, please vote in favor of Kodiak Vet Center, so, um, it's nice to hear that. Just see if anyone has. Called in. Now, we'll give another minute, see if anyone calls in. All right, I, uh, I don't see any new numbers or anyone dialing star nine, so I'll now close the, uh, public portion. And I'll entertain a motion from anyone on the board for discussion.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we approve Kodiak Veterinary Hospital LLC petitioner and Karen Roy owner variance under section three point oh two note six of the zoning ordinance to allow the construction of a building addition nineteen feet from the Daniel Webster Highway right of way, whereas fifty feet is required. Parcel is located at two fifty-five Daniel Webster Highway in the one one industrial and the I one industrial and aquifer conservation districts. Tax map three D dash two lot zero three nine case number Z B A twenty twenty dash forty-one. Petitioner shall also obtain approval from the planning board for the proposed veterinary hospital.
Second.
I thank you. So motion made by Rodney, seconded by Patrick. Rodney, are you in favor?
Yes.
Patrick, are you in favor?
Yes.
Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
Drew, are you in favor?
Yes.
And I as well am in favor, so this passes, uh, five zero zero. Um, and again, there's still that thirty-day window where someone could appeal. But otherwise, um, thank you guys very much and good luck.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members. We appreciate your time. Happy New Year. Stay safe, everyone. Thank you.
Happy New Year. Good luck. Happy New Year.
Good luck. Happy New Year.
All right, excellent. That brings us to, uh, last petition of the evening. Um, Granger Revocable Trust applicant owner variance under section three point oh two of the zoning ordinance to permit the petitioner to apply to the planning board for a subdivision to create a lot with a hundred and fifty feet of frontage, whereas two hundred and fifty feet is required. The parcel is located at two twenty-five Natacook Road in the R one residential by soils and aquifer conservation districts. Um, and wellhead protection area tax map two D lot zero three four case Z B A twenty twenty dash forty-two. Uh, and who will be speaking on this particular petition?
I will, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay?
I will, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay?
I, I can. Uh, may I have you just state your full name for the record?
Sure. My name is Tom Carr. I'm with Meridian Land Services and I'm here tonight to present this variance application for Granger Revocable Trust. I apologize for not having video tonight. I have a very old laptop with a with a horrible video card and I come through all screwed up, so, uh, I elected to, um, not go on video. Um, Robert, if you wouldn't mind bringing up sheet two of the, um, plan set. So we could all look at that and then I'll just start a, a brief, uh, description of that and then I'll go into the, uh, criteria.
All right. Before we get started, Mr. Carr, is anyone else going to be speaking tonight other than yourself?
I don't recognize anybody else online, Mr. Chairman, so I believe it will just be me. Um, Bud Whaley is the family representative. He may be one of the phone numbers that you see, but again, I don't recognize, I don't know Bud's number off the top of my head, so he may be on, I'm not sure.
Okay. In that case, um, could you please raise your right hand and you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, do.
All right. Thank you so much. Please continue. Uh, you're looking for sheet two?
Yes, please, Robert.
One second.
I'd like to see, you know, just the frontage with, with the existing house on the parent lot would be fine. So, um, this is in fact a proposed subdivision for a lot, uh, the lot with the house on it right there that you see. And this house is hooked up to, uh, town sewer and water on Natticook Road. So this particular house is in the R-four district, uh, sewer and water, which would require a hundred and fifty feet of frontage. The, um, there's a family member that lives in that house, um, that the, the family, the trust would like to, um, break that house off with a, with a large enough piece of land that can stay in current use and allow that family member to reside in that, um, home for the, for the rest of his natural life, uh, and be secured in that location. So they came to Meridian Land Services to, um, do a subdivision. We did a complete full boundary plan on this parcel. Um, and delineated and located all the wetlands on it because the family wanted to see, you know, what do we have here? We don't have any plans for it, um, for the remainder parcel, but we think since you have to do a full boundary survey to have uh, an accurate, um, boundary survey of the remainder parcel and the eleven acre, eleven and a half acre parcel for the family member, let's do the wetlands too. So, uh, we went through the whole process, got to the planning board and submitted our application, assuming that we were in fact in the R-four district, which again, the house is technically in R-four hooked up to sewer and water. And after we submitted, uh, with distribution of the plans to the various, um, entities in town, it was determined that the sewer in Natticook Road in fact has a moratorium on that and the sewer line is uh, strangely managed and hooked up to the Nashua plant. So the Merrimack Sewer District takes their orders from Nashua, um, who, uh, I, I don't, I can't tell you when they put a moratorium on it. Uh, we, we went, uh, we spent about five months trying to clarify this with the, uh, Nashua Sewer District. And, um, I don't know why, but they never got back to us with repeated emails and phone calls. I had one member of the, uh, Nashua Sewer District that was trying to help with his superiors, uh, he couldn't get answers after about four months. He threw up his hands and said, I can't get any answers for you. Try going over my head. I did and we got nowhere. So we're left with the, um, with the, really the only reasonable way would be to, um, ask for variance for the frontage for the remainder parcel, which is a very large piece of land. Um, you know, I did speak with Greg Michael, who you all know quite well, and advised him of the situation, uh, asked for his advice and he said, yes, in fact, the, uh, planning department and the planning board have made the correct decision because if, even if all the surrounding properties are hooked up to sewer and water, if it's not available, you have to default to a zoning district that does not have that available, even though it's in the street. So here we are, we've spent, um, you know, a little over twenty thousand dollars on a boundary survey, full wetlands, uh, getting to the planning board to be told you don't have enough frontage, um, because of this moratorium, which was, uh, a huge surprise to all of us. So that, that's kind of the summary of why we're here. I'd, I'd like to pause to see if any of the board members have any questions regarding, uh, where we're at and why we're here.
Any questions from the board? All right, please continue.
Okay, Robert, if you could, uh, take that down, I have to get to my, uh, my, uh, my variance criteria here. So I'll, I'll go through, I've, I've been a little bit wordy on, on this compared to the former variance requests, but I'll pause after each one. Uh, number one, granting the variance would may not be contrary to the public interest because lot sizing by soil type, and we're talking about the R-one, R-two, R-three districts and the associated frontages and setbacks are intended to create spatial distancing between houses and particularly septic systems. In this case, and geographic area, most of the abutting properties are on sewer and water. So these lots are not discharging sewer into surrounding soils. The proposed lot is also fifty-nine point six eight six acres and therefore spatially meets the intent of the ordinance and will not be contrary to public interest.
Any questions from the board?
Questions on that or comments?
I have one question. Is the, um, fifty-nine point six eight acres vacant land?
Yes, it is.
And what is the intent with that?
There's no, the, the Granger family has no direct intent with that at this point. Um, the intent of the subdivision was to cut off the house for the, for the family member that is in need of a residence for the remainder of his, his life. And the, the family, um, has agreed to do that. So the intent of the subdivision is to cut that piece off. And again, we, we all assumed that because that house was hooked up to sewer and water, all the surrounding properties are that a hundred and fifty feet of frontage was gonna be, you know, within the zoning requirements for the subdivision. So the answer is right now they have no intent. Um, you know, certainly I think it would be ridiculous to say that eventually this property will be sold or developed in some capacity. Um, but we, we don't know what or how that would happen. It, it could, it could be somebody would purchase it and put a single family residence on it and that would be it, but I think that's probably unlikely. To be honest. Anything further on number one? I'll go on to number two then. The, the spirit of the ordinance is, is observed because the spirit of the ordinance is, is, is observed by creating a lot that has vast areas of land associated for one single family dwelling. As noted in one above, spatial distancing for septic leach field is achieved by most of the surrounding lots being on sewer and water and the frontage is more than sufficient for access.
Any questions from the board? All right, on to number three.
Uh, grant, number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because this is a proposed two lot subdivision dividing seventy-one plus acres into two lots. Lot two B thirty-four, eleven point four three acres is being gifted to a family member for permanent ownership and residence and is on sewer and water, R-four district. The existing house location precludes the remainder parcel twenty-four, or I'm sorry, two B thirty-four dash one, fifty-nine point six eight six acres from having the required two hundred and fifty feet of frontage without a viable sewer hookup. The sewer restriction was unknown until advised by planning at the time of subdivision submission. All appropriate research and site planning were completed according to the current assumed R-four zoning district, zoning map and zoning ordinance. Uh, substantial monies have been invested in the proposal, therefore granting the waiver will do substantial justice to the family.
Any questions from the board on this? All right, on to four.
Granting the variance would not diminish the values of surrounding properties because the Granger Revocable Trust is not proposing a high-density subdivision with onsite septic on small lots in the default district, R-one. The proposal creates one single large lot for one single family dwelling. The property is surrounded by primarily residential development or commercial developments that are not visible or have buildings similar in appearance to the residential dwellings. The subdivision is subdivision, the subdivision of this one large lot with a hundred and fifty feet of frontage cannot diminish the values of surrounding properties.
Any questions from the board? All right, on to unnecessary hardship.
Okay, um, unnecessary hardship, owing to the following special conditions of the property that dis- distinguish it from other properties in the area. Explain how no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to this property. This property has two primary special conditions and or circumstances that distinguish it from others in the area. This property has sewer and water in the street and was assumed to be in the R-four district, which requires a hundred and fifty feet of frontage. We are requesting this variance to satisfy an administrative decision by planning staff and supported by the planning board that since the sewer is not available for hookup, the property defaults to the R-one district. Unknown to the Granger family and Meridian Land Services, although we applied the correct zoning considerations to the subdivision and in fact sewer and water are in Natticook Road, the sewer line is managed by the city of Nashua and has a moratorium for hookups. We spent several months trying to get the Nashua Sewer Department to understand our predicament and allow a single hookup for the remaining vacant lot. We received no reasonable assistance and have given up. Therefore, this variance request is our primary route to approval with the Merrimack Planning Board. Given the planning staff and board's position on dual zoning for this location, the existing house is located in a spot that precludes the proposal, proposed lot from having two hundred and fifty feet of frontage. If we provided two hundred and fifty feet of frontage to the remainder of lot two B thirty-four one, we would need a variance for the existing home to be situated within the sideline building setbacks. And this is certainly contrary to the zoning intent and spatial distancing of homes. Based on the special needs circumstances of the lot, the proposed size of the lot, that the proposed frontage is sufficient to allow safe and reasonable access and that the other provisions of this request are reasonable, the request is fair and will provide substantial justice to the Granger family to allow the variance. Strict adherence and application to the administrative decision and therefore zoning requirements does not have a fair and substantial relationship to the situation and application. Um, and I'll go on with B, the proposed subdivision is sufficient for access and will not cause unreasonable traffic congestion. The lot, as noted, is very large and will easily accommodate a single family home that will meet the intent of lot sizing by soil type and or non availability of sewer connections. Um, I did fill out the other part, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if the board wants me to read that or just leave it as the first, uh, first section. I'm happy to read them both, if that's okay.
Um.
It's either or, so I.
If the board's happy with the answers given, then.
Okay, so.
I think we're, I think we're good.
In conclusion, and, uh, you know, I've, 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 you know, we've thought about this and, and if the, if the board so chooses to grant this waiver, we certainly have to, uh, work out a note with the planning staff and the planning board. And, and the last thing I wrote in the variance application unrelated to the application was, uh, we propose to the, we propose the following draft note to be added to the subdivision plan at the discretion and review with modifications to be finalized by planning staff, planning board and the client. This subdivision was granted a variance request on date. Uh, for pro- proposed lot two B thirty-four one to allow a hundred and fifty feet of frontage or two hundred and fifty feet would be required due to a moratorium on the sewer line. Any further subdivision of lot two B thirty-four one will require an active and accessible municipal sewer system or development of the lots with sufficient front, uh, frontage, lot sizing and setbacks for onsite septic systems. And of course, that would be in the R-one or R-two district depending on, you know, a site-specific soil map that would be done at that time. So, you know, we recognize the fact that we're, we're leaving a large piece of land here that you know, it's, it's intent, it, it's intent right now is unknown, but, but quite frankly, I think we're all, you know, smart enough to realize that this is probably gonna be bought or eventually subdivided with a road or, or some cluster type stu- style of development. And at that point, um, certainly anything further would have to comply with the zoning district appropriate for, for that particular remaining parcel. So that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'll rest. If there's any other questions or comments, I'm happy to answer them if I can. Thank you.
I don't really have any questions for this. Does anyone on the board have any questions? All right. So what I'll go ahead and do is open this to the, the public. For anyone that's looking to speak either in favor or against this petition, uh, please dial the number at the bottom of the screen. Um, and, and, and press star nine, uh, to indicate to me that you're looking to speak either in favor or against this petition. All right. So it looks like we do have a caller, uh, number ending in one one seven. If you could please dial star six, uh, to unmute yourself, um, and state your name and your address so that we know, uh, where you're calling from.
Uh, yes, hi, my name is Patricia Marshall Dumont. My address is twenty-six Joey Road and I am in a butter to the Granger property.
Okay. And, uh, if you could please, um, just, uh, raise your right hand and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth tonight?
I do.
Okay. Um, so, uh, please let us know, uh, what you're calling about.
Well, I actually have some concerns because I do about the, um, property to the rear of my home. And currently, um, we have got forest, complete forest between our development here on Joey Road and the, um, commercial industrial properties out on Route one oh one A. So the concerns are that if, um, if allowing this variance is going to open up this property for future development, and I'm, I'm hearing them today say, well, at this time and as of now, and when I hear those sorts of phrases, it tells me that this variance is going to open the door for a future development of possibly a subdivision with twenty homes, thirty, forty, fifty. Um, and so it's just concerning at this point in time that under the guise of saying, we just want to split this off so one family member can have a property and the rest will just be fifty-nine, I guess, point six eight acres out there that's already been granted a variance. Once the variance is granted, it's granted. And it seems that where they do not have an answer at this time to the sewerage moratorium, that moving forward at this time with just the, um, uh, the unknown of at this time, we have no plans, does not seem, uh, to make sense. It just opens the door to too many, uh, possibilities that could bring negative impact and that is the concern of the neighborhood here.
I could address that, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like.
Um, yeah, so the, the, I did guess the only thing that I would, I would start off with is the, the variance that we're actually, uh, voting on tonight is, uh, to allow the petitioner to go to the planning board. Um, not so much, um, any action that's being done tonight. Um, so I would say that I think that's a, 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 a good concern to have. However, um, i- if this motion, if this carries, um, and, and the variance is passed, this same thing will need to be heard in front of the planning board and I, I think that would be a great place to ask a question like that. Um, but what I'll, what I'll go ahead and do is, um, I'll, I'll ask, uh, Mr. Carr, um, if you could, uh, to, to, to please, uh, uh, re- respond with what, what, what I guess the plans are specifically with the, um, with the remaining fifty-nine acres.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so, so the intent of this. The resulting, the result of this variance application, if in fact it is approved. Would be to allow this remaining parcel to be a, a single family residential lot. So in other words, this isn't allowing, um, this isn't opening up the door to a bigger, a bigger development. Any more than what currently exists on that property right now. If the Granger family wanted to do a large subdivision or cluster subdivision in there. They don't need a variance to cut off the lot and give it to the family member and have a remaining parcel. They could, we could go right to the planning board with a, with a subdivision plan and, and go with a road up in there. And it wouldn't involve the zoning board at all. Um, so I, I understand your concerns. We hear this all the time from a butters, but the intent. The purpose of this zoning ordinance right now is to put, to make one seventy plus acre lot into two lots. They're both single family dwelling properties, not, uh, there's no, there's no proposal for a. Subdivision or a cluster development or, or housing project in here. It's two single family lots and I want to stress the point that even if we weren't doing this zoning application. To cut this piece off for this family member, the door is open right now for the Granger family to say. Let's go developer, um, we're, we're going in partners with you. We don't need to do a subdivision. We're going to put a road right off of Natick Road and let's do it. Uh, that doesn't involve the zoning board. It just involves the planning board. Uh, and, and working with the, uh, the R one district on developing the property, so. The, the, the potential uh future development of this property exists regardless of this application.
So I, I would, uh. I would of course second that, um, given the nature of the variance. So, uh, to the caller, um, are there any other questions that you have in follow up? Or, um, the, do you feel that, that, that your, your needs have been addressed?
Well, it feels, it feels as if, that if anything is going to move forward in the future for additional um building. Then there would be an additional forum for that and it sounds like at this time. Um, they're just talking about dividing the property but letting it rest as is. Does that change? Um, it seems like I'm hearing that part of this property is R four, that would be the home that's already built. And then, uh, would the, um, would the empty lot be R one? Is, is, am I understanding that correctly or do I have that reversed?
That's correct, that's correct. By default, because we can't hook up to the sewer or I should say. By default, because the Granger family cannot hook up to the sewer system. It defaults, so it, it's almost like spot zoning that that particular remainder parcel. Has to be considered an R one parcel and not an R four because we can't hook up to the sewer. Even though all of the properties around it on Natick Road and your lot up, up to, up, up to the east and north. I think everything but, um, I don't know, I think it's, I don't know if it's Green Road, I, I uh don't have my, my picture up. But, uh, the, the larger lots up to the, um, uh. West of the property are not on sewer up there, but I, I believe like eighty percent of the lots around it are on sewer. At least.
I do believe that is correct and I, I do have one other additional follow up with regard to the uh moratorium. Are you expecting at any point an answer from Nashua or will you be following up with that or have you completely um tabled that?
Yeah, we're, we're done with Nashua. I, um, I, I really don't want to speak any further about that because I don't have anything good to say. Maybe it's circumstances related to COVID. I know they're, they're, they're not working in this sewer plant. Uh, people were hard to get in touch with and I don't, I don't know what the problem was, but we, we've given up.
Okay, at this time I have no additional follow up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, if there's anyone else that's looking to call in or speak regarding this petition. Um, again, please dial in, dial star nine. I don't see any new phone numbers coming in. Um. Well, do is I'll go ahead and close the public portion of this petition and entertain a motion or discussion regarding this petition.
Um, I have to, I kind of echo the, the caller's concerns. I think this does potentially open the door. Um, but you know, like they said, they could easily come in here and build a development without going to zoning. Quite frankly, I think it'll, if this ends up becoming a development, it'll probably end up going to zoning because it'll probably be some sort of a cluster type thing. I imagine that's what we've been seeing a lot of. Um, I can't see anything on there to, as far as the. Uh, what, what they spoke with about the, uh, the, as far as the, the, the five areas. I didn't see anything in there that, that could say no. Um, I can't say I'm overly thrilled with this one. Because I think that does, it could potentially open the door, but, um, I'm gonna, I would, I personally am gonna hold off on, uh. Making a motion, so I, I'll, I'll leave that to someone else to make the motion in the second one.
Yeah, the only thing that I would, uh, I would add on is this is a, this is kind of unique where we're not. All we're really doing is acting as a conduit to the planning board in this one. So, um, where I, 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 I also agree that, you know. It would make sense to want to, uh, to further subdivide or to do something with the property other than making it a single family. That's just, it's not really the focus of what we have to look at tonight, I guess.
I agree, I agree. That's why it's, you know, and looking at the five areas, you know, it's like, is there anything in there? But, you know, they, they, if looking at snapshot of what we're looking at now because we can't say what if what, you know, what could possibly happen. We have to look at the here and now, the here and the now, they seems pretty reasonable.
Right. So Ben, Rodney, Drew, would, would I, any of you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve Granger revocable trust applicant owner. Variance under section three point oh two of the zoning ordinance to permit the petitioner to apply to the planning board. For a subdivision in, in lot with a hundred and fifty feet. Parcel is located at two fifty five Natick Road and the R one residential by soils. At referred conservation district, well, in the next area, X map two B lot zero three four. Case number Z B A twenty three dash forty two.
A second. Alright, and Rodney, if you could just, uh, please, um, add in the, um.
Yeah, the petitioner shall obtain approval from the planning board for the proposed subdivision.
So I guess before we continue, Robert, that seems, am I crazy? That seems a little redundant to me.
Yeah, but either way, so if you don't put the condition on there, they don't go to the planning board to ultimately get the approval of the variance. Kind of still sits out there. It's, it's a weird quirky thing, but this is a way to help sunset it if it doesn't end up going anywhere for whatever reason.
I see, so i- i- it prevents us from writing a blank check.
Yeah, essentially.
Okay, um, alright, so uh motion made by Rodney, seconded by Ben. Uh, Rodney, are you in favor?
Yes.
Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
Patrick, are you in favor?
Stain.
Drew, are you in favor?
Abstain.
Alright, I am in favor. So, uh, this will pass three zero two with Patrick and Drew abstaining. Um. So I guess the, the only thing that I would, I would say, Mr. Carr is, you know, there is a thirty day uh window where an appeal could be made. Um, however, given the nature of the variance, um, this is just going to the planning board anyway, so.
Right.
Um, I guess with that being said, uh, good luck.
Okay.
Uh, hopefully everything works out well.
Thank you. I hope everyone has a safe and happy new year and thank you very much for your time tonight.
Have a great evening, happy new year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, this brings us to discussion of other items of concern. Um, I do have an item of concern. Um, you know, we, we've now had a vacancy on the, on the board for a couple of months. And I, I, I thought, do, do we just not, I guess, what's, what's, what's going on with that?
So I talked to the, uh, general government office today. Um, there. I, I think it was inadvertently lost, seen in the holiday shuffle, that there are actually a couple of different board appointments that are pending. Um, so Ben, I was going to do this right now anyway to let you know that, uh, they are going to get you on a council member. A council agenda to handle your appointment as a full member. Uh, in, as soon as possible. I don't have a date yet, but if you want to follow up with them, maybe they can let you know what a schedule looks like. But that is back on their radar.
Okay, I'll shoot an email out to them.
Okay, so it, is this the same, the, the whole interview process thing?
I don't know how, if they went anywhere with that yet. I don't know where that stands. I just know that it's, it's. Ben's not the only one. There's, I think, the somebody for a conservation commission also who needs to get appointed. So I don't know if they're gonna go through that interview process. If it's already been done, I don't know where that last, where that stays, stands.
Uh, because if I, if I recall correctly, and I don't remember who said this. Uh, we had to wait something like thirty days with an open rec to see if anyone else would, would want to apply.
Yeah, and I know we've definitely been through that now.
Okay, and so no one else outside of the board has, has applied for, um, a full, full-time member position?
Not that I'm aware.
Okay. Alright, so, uh.
Along those lines, Mr. Chair, uh, we do still have obviously a vacant vice chair position. Um, so I have been asked to ask the board again if you would like to take a vote to fill the vice chair position at this time.
Uh, I'll be honest, I'm still of the mindset that we should fill the board before we make appointments, however. Um, it's an opinion, uh, so I ask, I guess, those of you that are on the call tonight, uh, what are your thoughts?
Well, a community development or if Tim and Rob are saying that we got to fill the position, probably should. Get somebody in there. Um, you know, I agree, I think we should have the board full, but I don't know. Yeah, I, I mean, what do we have left open? Uh, we have a, an alternate position and a, a full-time position?
Yeah, so right now there's one alternate and one full-time. If and when Ben gets moved up into full-time, we will have two alternates open.
So the two alternate positions aren't gonna, are gonna, uh, uh, weigh in on, uh, the, they wouldn't weigh in on a vice president?
Right.
So.
Oh, and that being said, the only people that would be eligible for vice chair would be. Uh, Rodney, yourself, Patrick and Lynn. So I honestly, I.
Correct.
I don't really. I don't know.
Patrick, would you be interested in that position? And I say that, yeah, now I say that because in our last conversation, um, we talked about this. And I think you had mentioned that by default, a prior chair could fill in.
I mean, if there's no, I, I'm, I'm, I was, I was guessing on that. I figured that if Rich didn't make a meeting for whatever reason and I was there. Since I had been a chair and a vice chair, I could easily step into it. But Rod, i- i- if you want to step into a vice chair position, um, I have no problem with that either, or if Lynn wants it. I know, you know, I, I know, it's.
Okay, I didn't know if you were hinting that you might be interested in, that's why I was asking.
I, I, I serve at the will of the people. But, uh, no, I mean, Rod, if you're interested and you want to get your feet wet in that area, that, that, that's fine. If Rich, if you want me to take the vice chair position for the rest of the year, I can do that. Or whenever the, the elections come up, I can do that as well. Whatever, whatever you guys want to do, I'm, I'm totally flexible. Rob, what do you think?
Um, I mean, it doesn't necessarily matter what I think. I think, I don't want to put words in Lynn's mouth with her not being here. But I think she's expressed that she does not want that type of position on the Z B A. Though I will also say, uh, Rich, I know you served as vice before Kathy was put into it. It's, it's kind of been going in a seniority role, um, so Patrick, having already played that role, it would be logical to move on to Rod. And if Rod is nervous about it, as Rich was being pushed up to chair, I, I will say vice chair doesn't necessarily really. Do all that much other than fill in if the chair is not there. So it's not like you're being asked a whole lot in that role.
The, the cool thing is, um, if you're vice chair, you don't know if you're in the hot seat till seven o'clock that night, so I mean.
That's always fun. Been in that situation many a times.
Well, could I suggest that, that Patrick take over and just complete this year to what, June? Is, i- is there a calendar year to us?
I, I think it's, I think we've done this around August.
August, yeah, that's right.
I mean, maybe at that point, then, uh. I mean, I, I'm not.
Vice chair at that point, yeah, if you wanted to.
Maybe, but maybe not. But, but maybe at that point, the, 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 the committee will be complete with, uh, the full staff plus the alternates.
Um, so I, I'll. I like that idea. I thi- I think we should do that. Um, however, I'm one vote, so.
Can I nominate Patrick?
Yep, there it is.
Uh, so, uh, this, this is gonna be the, the biggest noob question asked by a chairman ever, but. Do, I, I don't even think I have to ask it. Do alternates have the ability, if they're voting, uh, to vote in on this?
Yeah, there's no reason they can't.
Okay. So I, how do we do this? Patrick, do you accept the nomination?
Sure, I accept the nomination.
Okay.
Now, do we put a condition of like August to get him off the hook if he wants?
I, I, I come August, I think, I did, and I'll speak for Rob here. Come August, it, did, did we vote for all, we vote for chair and vice chair regardless?
Okay, alright, there we go.
Whole new set of people that are nominated.
Didn't you buy a place down in the villages?
Alright, so, uh, Rodney, um, are you in favor of Patrick, uh, becoming the?
Vice chair.
Vice chair?
Yes.
Okay, Ben, are you in favor?
Yes.
Drew, are you in favor?
Yes.
Patrick, are you in favor?
Uh, y- yes.
Okay, I guess, I'm in favor. So five zero zero, Patrick is now vice chair and I'm calling out next month.
Oh, awesome, awesome. It's been a while since I ran a meeting. I've done it on Zoom, so that'll be fun, but, uh, no, thank you.
Just, uh, the, the, the only hard part about doing this over Zoom is remembering to pronounce the word contemporaneously correctly.
Ah, right, well, contemporary.
Thank you, thank you, Patrick, for accepting that.
No worries. I just hope I don't have computer issues. For some reason, Rob, your email and for some reason Sharon's email. For that parti- those particular emails went to my, uh, spam filter, which is why, and I never check it.
I just see how you feel about us now, that's all.
Ah, I don't feel that way. It's, it's the whole thing. It's like all of a sudden, hot Yahoo decided to send everything to different mailboxes. It was awesome.
Well, sorry about that.
No, I apologize, so.
Um, I gotta say that, uh, uh, approval of minutes, um, I, I, I love approving minutes that are one sheet of paper. I love this.
Doesn't it?
It does. I feel like you don't even have to watch the meeting, I mean, you should, obviously you should have, but. Uh, there, there was, there was no real substance in this, so.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November eighteenth, twenty twenties meeting.
Okay.
Okay, I don't know who seconded. Okay, so Patrick, you're in favor?
Yes.
Ben, you're in favor?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Drew?
I abstain.
Abstain, okay, and I'm in favor, so five zero one, uh, four zero one, four zero one, yeah, Drew abstains.
I don't think I was here last month. Does that matter?
It, it doesn't matter. You can vote on minutes either way, but.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
In the past, we'd kind of discussed that y- if you have watched the video, all eight minutes of last month. um, then you, then you can, then you, you, you should vote on it. But if you haven't, um, it's, you can abstain, I guess. But you shouldn't abstain if you've either seen or were participating. Um, all right.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Second.
Motion made by Drew. Motion made by Drew, uh, seconded by Rodney, and, uh, Drew, are you in favor?
Nope.
Isn't that a contradiction?
It's okay, you can make a motion and not, uh, and not back it.
She's right. You can, she can do that.
Thanks for dragging this out, Drew.
Just wanted to see you guys a little longer this year. Twenty-twenty's been wild.
Does that mean I get to vote twice?
Nice, yes, because.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Take care, everyone.
All right, see you guys later. Bye.
Bye. Bye-bye.
Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel-to-gavel coverage of town and school board meetings to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Uh, good morning. I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack Municipal Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.